Welcome, everybody, to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for November 2nd, 2020. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson? Oh, you're muted.
I'm here, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Councilmembers on?
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag?
of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
which stands
one
indivisible, nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have any oral communications tonight?
Yes, this evening, there is one speaker signed up for oral communications, and that is Brian McGowan. Mr. McGowan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian McGowan. I'm the CEO of Greater Seattle Partners. As the successor organization to the King County EDC and the Trade Development Alliance, it's been an honor to work with the City of Bellevue, its economic development team, and Councilmember Lee over the last few years. And for my 26 years of economic development experience, I believe the economic development strategy you will hopefully adopt tonight is excellent, and we can help you move the needle on many of its strategic themes. We also appreciate your economic development team's involvement in helping GSP create a regional economic recovery framework which focuses on equity and inclusion. And I also want to thank Mayor Robinson for serving on the mayor's work group for that important work. We are currently working on 40 active business leads representing 3,900 jobs and $455 million in capex for the region. Of those, we've landed 11 companies representing 2,300 jobs and $157 million in capex. In fact, our very first win was the company we landed in Bellevue. Last year, we were proud to announce that Cruise Automotive was creating 200 engineering jobs in Bellevue. And Bellevue is more important to the region now than ever. Because of the actions of the City Council in Seattle, our sales pitch to the world now pivots immediately to Bellevue. Your city is the bright shining light in our region as we work to tell the other story of our region. Cities like yours and others who are all very business friendly and welcome investment and prioritize the safety of its residents and workforce. We all know that economies don't work within the little lines that we draw on maps, so it's important that we work together as a region. We know that our competition is not really from within the region, it's from other regions around the country that want what we have. So it's GSP's job to market this region to the world, to ensure that we are attracting investment, and to ensure that we have a healthy flow of talent so that our companies can compete. After having weathered the initial impacts of COVID-19, GSP is back in growth mode and hiring. We were pleasantly surprised that the expected negative financial impact on the development in this region. But before I moved here two years ago, I never heard of Bellevue, and I feel like I should have. So we need to, so we look forward to working with you, first, to better tell the Bellevue story around the world, secondly, to attract even more jobs and investment to the region, and thirdly, to elevate Bellevue's position within the region. I personally look forward to helping you advance your strategies, your strategic themes of collaboration, regionalism, internationalism, and communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There are no additional speakers.
Anna Mayor, could I go on quickly?
No, 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 thank you.
Can I acknowledge Brian?
Uh, Conrad, I'll give you a chance to say that after communications are done. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that was the end of our preregistered list. However, there are several participants in the meeting this evening. If there is anyone connected that would like to make oral communication to the council, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. And Mayor, I do not see anyone else raising their hand. That would be the end of communications.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee, when we get to the economic development part, I'll let you speak to that. Mr. Miyake, do you have a report that you'd like to give to us?
Yes, Mayor Robinson, I have one item I just like to highlight, which is included in your consent calendar this evening. And that is item 8D, Resolution 9835, which authorizes the execution of grant agreements with human service agencies for cost incurred due to COVID. As council is aware of, the human service agencies serving Bellevue have been significantly challenged from a funding perspective due to COVID. And on October 12th, the city received additional CARES Act funds, which approximately 1.1 million has been dedicated to human service agencies serving Bellevue for significant unbudgeted expenses and a loss of revenue they've experienced due to COVID. And so I just wanted to highlight to you this evening that Resolution 9835 awards the $1.1 million to 14 agencies demonstrating a critical need for these dollars. And that's all I have to report on this evening, Mayor.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So do I have a motion? Let's go ahead on to consent calendar. Does there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, next we have a public hearing on oh, 8,000 Northeast 16th Street. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. This is a public hearing authorizing the partial release of a utility easement. And as you mentioned, this is located on, at 8,000 Northeast 16th Street. This was last before you on September 21st of 2020 where you declared the easement area surplus. And you set tonight's public hearing. Following the public hearing, council will be asked to take action on the proposed resolution to release the surplus of surplus easement. And that will be by way of Resolution 9836. Joining us this evening is Ira McDaniel, the real property manager. With that, I'll just turn it over to Ira. Ira?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miyake, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Our staff report tonight is under the request to release or partially release a water easement located at 8,000 Northeast 16th Street. This is in Medina. And tonight's public hearing is an opportunity to allow the public to comment on the proposed release. The easement is located on property that's owned by the Overlake Golf Course, which is shown here in purple, lying west of 84th Avenue Northeast and north of Northeast 16th Street. And the easement's in the southeast corner of that property. And there's a property there that's not highlighted, and that's the St. Thomas School, and we'll zoom in on that in this next frame. So here we have a picture of the easement and the portion that's being released and the new area. So the St. Thomas School owns this property that's next to the golf course, and they lease a portion of the golf course property for the school. And the school is in the process of constructing a new gymnasium inside their leased area. And the footprint of that new construction extends over a portion of the existing water main and its easement. So Overlake Golf Course and St. Thomas School are proposing to relocate the existing water main and have a partial release of the water easement so that they can move forward with their construction. The portion to be released is shown in blue, and the new portion is shown here in orange. Following the public hearing, staff will request council's action on the proposed resolution authorizing the partial release of the easement. And that in the staff report will be available following the public hearing for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and we'll do the public hearing, and then if we have questions of staff after, we can do that during discussion. So is, right now, is there a motion to open, open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have any public testimony to hear?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no preregistered speakers. However, at this time, I would ask if there is anyone who would like to comment during the public hearing, please use your raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there any council discussion or questions right now? I can see you, so if you raise your hand. Not seeing any. All right, so let's go ahead and give me the motion to adopt Resolution 9836.
Certainly, I move to adopt Resolution 9836, authorizing the execution of documents necessary to release a portion of the existing water easement located at 8,000 Northeast 16th Street, which has been declared surplus to the city's needs and is no longer required for providing continued public utility service.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. So we're on to our two study session items. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce these?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, you have two items in front of you. The first one is with relative to the budget. This represents the third of six meetings scheduled for the proposed operating and capital budgets in front of you. This evening's budget session is focused on the Human Services Commission's recommendations for the 2122 human services funding, the 2021 community development block grant funding, as well as to respond to any follow-up questions. This evening, staff seeks direction on preparing ordinances approving the Human Services Commission's recommendations. And with that, we had joining us this evening is Toni Call, our Finance and Asset Management Director. And she's also joined by Michael Shiosaki, Director of Parks and Community Development and Services, and DeeDee Catalano, the Grants Coordinator, as well as Timothy Ma, the Chair of our Human Services Commission. With that, I'll turn it over to Toni. Toni?
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. And council members, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, it's lovely to be back here with you this evening. And thank you, K.E., for bringing up the PowerPoint tonight. As City Manager Miyake mentioned, we have two updates for you on the budget update. One is the Human Services Commission work, and the second is we are coming back to you with some responses to council questions from October 19th. Next slide, please. The council direction we're asking for this evening is actually for you to, as you did last week with Development Services, approve the Human Services recommendations for the 2122 human services funding and the 21 community block grant fundings. If approved, they'd come back to you for full adoption on the budget package on December 7th. Tonight, we'll take a quick review of our calendar and actions that are needed for final adoption. We've seen those slides a couple of times. I'll go through them fairly quickly. I'll then turn it over to Director Shiosaki of Parks and Community Services to talk on human services. And then we'll come back to me, and we will discuss a couple of council questions that occurred from October 19th. And then we'll end with a review of where the last few meetings will be at. This is a chart we've seen several times before now. We started our budget work back in June 22nd with a budget workshop. We've had a couple of public hearings. We're now, as you can see in our weekly study session updates, our next public hearing will be on November 23rd. And if council directs, we'll bring back budget adoption for you on December 7th. And the last few meetings we have, as you can see here, October 19th, we brought the City Manager's preliminary presentation. October 26th, last week, Development Services was here, and you did a direct as to bring back those ordinances with adoption. Tonight is Human Services, Utility Rates, and Fire Inspection Fee in a Public Hearing. And with that, oops, one more slide, please. This is the series of actions that will be required to adopt the budget this year. There's 10 of them, as you can see from this list. Tonight, we're focusing on the Human Services and Block Grant ordinances. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Shiosaki for Human Services.
Thank you, Toni. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members, and City Manager Miyake. I'm Michael Shiosaki, and I'm here tonight with Grant Coordinator DeeDee Catalano and Human Services Chair Timothy Ma to present the commission's funding recommendations for 2021 and 2022. Other staff who are present are Assistant Director Toni Asparza and Human Services Manager Alex O'Reilly. And other members of the Human Services Commission are watching virtually in support of their recommendations. As Toni Call mentioned, we're seeking City Council approval of the commission's recommendations for the 2021 and 2022 Human Services Fund and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds, which will be adopted as a part of the city budget in December. The, and I'll say, next slide, please. So the foundation of the Human Services Funding Process is the 2019 and 2020 Human Services Needs Update. The Needs Update identifies gaps in services through data collection and conversations with diverse communities and key stakeholders throughout the city. The Human Services Commission's application, review, and funding recommendations for both the General Fund and the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds are informed by this data and the community feedback. Next slide, please. Bellevue took proactive, thank you. Bellevue took proactive steps to ensure equity in the grant-making process. As information sessions, an information session was held during the fall of 2019 to provide smaller organizations that serve diverse communities with advanced notice of funding requirements so that they would have time to prepare. The City of Bellevue contracted with the nonprofit Communities Rise to provide grant funding technical assistance free of charge during the application period to agencies representing communities impacted by systemic oppression. The Human Services Commissioners received training on how to review applications through an equity lens. And all programs that receive funding must submit annual demographic reports that show the populations they are serving. Next slide, please. It's no surprise that the arrival of the pandemic and the stay-at-home order in March have had a profound effect on all social service agencies. Our Human Services team took a number of steps during the application and review process to be responsive. The application submission deadline was extended by four weeks to May 5th to accommodate applicants' early pandemic workload. In July, Bellevue staff asked all applicants to update them on how COVID-19 had affected their programs since submitting their applications so that this information could be considered during the funding process. The Commission had to balance the acute needs arising from the pandemic with the ongoing needs of the entire Human Services Continuum. And with that background, DeeDee Catalano will now provide a brief overview of the review process for the General Fund and the CDBG grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The city received just over $70 million in funding requests for 2021 Human Services Funding. The available budget of $4.1 million is roughly 10% more than the 2020 budget amount, but the requests are still $2.9 million more than what is available. Next slide. The Human Services Commission met 10 times between June 30th and October 6th to review 102 applications for funding. Of the 30 applications submitted for new programs, 10 have been recommended for funding. Next slide. Five of these 10 new programs serve Black, Indigenous, People of Color, and people with disabilities. You'll see that final bullet point. Bellevue did not receive an application for cultural navigator services for the Latinx population. The Commission felt it was important to fill that gap in services, so they are recommending that $10,000 be set aside for a request for proposals to be issued early next year to find an agency that can provide that service. Next slide. CDBG, the Commission is also presenting the recommendations for CDBG 2021, that's Community Development Block Grant Funding. All CDBG projects must be an eligible activity that meets the national objective to serve low and moderate income Bellevue residents. Next slide. We won't know our exact 2021 CDB budget until Congress passes the 2021 National Budget. The estimated budget of $1,033,000 is based on our 2020 entitlement amount and the estimated amount of loan paybacks from the major home repair program, which constitute our program income. The contingency plan, which is Attachment D in your packet, describes how funds would be allocated if the actual budget amount is higher or lower than the estimated. Bellevue will also receive $897,000 in special CDBG CV funds next year to respond to the coronavirus. Bellevue received $489,000 in the CDBG CV funds earlier this year, which the council allocated in May. There will be an RFP issued early next year to solicit applications for this funding, and the Human Services Commission will present their recommendations to the City Council at that time. And finally, this, these are the Commission's funding recommendations for 2021. They're also in Attachment C in your packet. The Commission Chair will review these recommendations in his remarks. I would just add that CDBG administration and planning reimburses staff time that is spent administering the CDBG program. So I'd like to now introduce Timothy Ma, Human Services Commission Chair, who will present the Commission's funding recommendations to you.
All right, thank you, DeeDee. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Human Services Commission's funding recommendations to you tonight. Commissioners spent over 20 hours during 10 virtual meetings reviewing and discussing 102 applications plus additional time spent outside of meetings. While it is always difficult to make funding recommendations when the requests are far higher than the available budget, this year was particularly challenging due to the effects of the pandemic on all human services providers. Not only were providers hit with increased demand and additional expenses to respond to COVID-19, but any also experienced reduced revenue due to canceled fundraising events and loss of participants' fees. Data collected by the 2019-2020 Bellevue Human Services Needs Update provided the backbone for the Commissioner's review process and identified service gaps that helped guide our decision-making. While considering our recommendations, we noted the impact of the pandemic on all service areas, especially basic needs such as housing and food, while also maintaining the network of services that are a critical part of the Human Services Continuum. Gaps that are funding recommendations address and include affordable childcare and its impacts on the ability of parents and caregivers to work, behavioral health services, especially for youth experiencing additional stressors due to the pandemic, legal assistance to address affixions and landlord tenant conflicts that will occur when the current moratorium ends, domestic violence services to address this rising need. The requests for shelters and day centers for single adults and families and youth experiencing homelessness were almost 300% higher than the 2020 funded amounts due to the fact that most shelters are now operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In addition, the one-time funding allocated by the City Council to shelter services in 2020 is not included in the 2021 Human Services Fund. Our recommendations for shelters and day centers increases their funding as much as possible while also keeping the rest of the continuum intact. The Commission was committed to an equitable application review process, keeping in mind that organizations run by members of underserved communities and communities of color are often more trusted by the populations they serve. We were pleased that these organizations were offered grant-writing technical assistance to reduce barriers to applying for funding and that this assistance was advertised with the help of the East Side Refugee and Immigrant Coalition as a means to reach as many organizations as possible. As you saw on an earlier slide, the Commission's recommendations include funding for five new programs that increase equity by serving diverse and underrepresented communities. These programs include cultural navigators and information referral services to ensure that diverse populations are connected to the services they need. We also recommend continued funding for currently funded programs that serve diverse communities, including Black, Indigenous, People of Color, and residents with disabilities. One of the duties assigned to the Human Services Commission by the City Council is to develop recommendations on priorities for the allocation of city resources to meet identified needs. As I noted earlier, having homelessness shelters and day centers operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is a high priority for the city. We cannot recommend fully funding these requests without eliminating funding for much of the rest of the continuum. To emphasize this outstanding need, we added a column that provides the Commission's recommendations for additional funding for the shelters should those dollars become available. Turning now to the 2021 CDBG funding recommendations. The Commission recommends full funding for the major and minor home repair programs. These programs help to keep low and moderate income residents in their homes, and they have been able to continue operating during the pandemic while adhering to the governor's restrictions. We also recommend funding Seattle Business Education Hubs, Technical Assistance and Financial Literacy Training Program for small businesses. This organization has strong ties to the East Side, including the East Side Refugee and Immigrant Coalition and East Side for All. The majority of Seattle Business Education Hubs clients are women, minorities, and limited English-speaking immigrants. This program addresses a strategy in the city's draft Economic Development Plan to expand access to technical training for small business owners of diverse backgrounds and fills a gap that Startup 425 does not address. As Ms. Catalano mentioned earlier, we won't know our exact 2021 CDBG budget until sometime next year, but the contingency plan addresses how to allocate the funds if the budget is higher or lower than estimated. On behalf of the entire Human Services Commission, I would like to thank the City Council for your support in building a strong foundation for human services so that all of Bellevue's residents can thrive and reach their full potential. And thank you very much.
Mayor, I think we're turning it back over to you. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Tim, it's nice to see you. And it's really great to see you enroll as Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go ahead and give everybody an opportunity to comment or ask questions. And I'm going to call on people in this order: Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, as a council liaison to the Human Services Commission, then me, then Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember on, Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Stokes. So Deputy Mayor, would you like to start us off?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. And, you know, first, just a round of applause for the great work done by Chairman Ma and the entire Human Services Commission. You know, this is very challenging and difficult work, even at the best of times, but to make very difficult decisions and the reviewing of the applications, well over 100 during a pandemic makes this all the more challenging. And then also just want to thank the staff for providing such guidance, great guidance as well for the Commission, be it DeeDee, Alex, Toni, Michael. Just fantastic job helping, you know, the entire Commission kind of wade through these waters a little bit during these difficult times. So I'm extremely pleased with the final recommendation here and certainly has my endorsement and happy to move this forward. You know, there's a couple of things here I really want to call out, and Chairman Ma called them out already on some of them. But, you know, the fact that we did delay the process for when all applications needed to be in, the outreach to the organizations and the nonprofits and the operators to ensure that we had a full understanding of what was happening in terms of their impact on COVID-19 or the impact COVID-19 and the pandemic was having on their organization to be able to deliver services and help our community was what I believe was crucial to getting to this point. So the other thing I wanted to mention was also, as Chairman Ma mentioned, that so much of this is done through that equity lens, which I think is really important right now, and I really applaud the pausing so we can get some cultural navigators for the Latinx community as well. But the affordable childcare was a key part of this, and I know some of my colleagues feel strongly about that. That was really critical as well. As without that childcare, so many people cannot work, cannot get to work, or can't afford daycare, so they cannot get to work. So that's just, that's just critical. The behavioral health services, the legal assistance during a time when, you know, people are dealing with real issues of potentially being evicted from their, from their apartment. And then something near and dear to me, you know, serving on the Board of Life, were the fact that, you know, domestic violence is up dramatically, unfortunately, and as the pandemic continues to roll on, we're going to see more and more of such instances. So that's a critical need. But I, you know, I think the Commission also did a great job But, you know, I think the commission also did a great job just listening to staff in terms of the continuance guidance of what we're hearing from the community, that first and foremost, shelter and food insecurity always seem to be near the top of the list in terms of the most urgent needs, and I think this is reflected here as well. So again, great job, the entire commission and Chairman Ma, and I'm happy to see a few people, I think, there that are in attendance tonight. I think I see Commissioner Jude Mercer here as well, but thank you for being here, and I hope you're all very proud of the great work that you've done, and I look forward to hearing the comments from my colleagues. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just, I wanted to thank you, because this is such a thoughtful process, and it's a lot of work, and I just want to thank you all for the good decision-making that you're doing and all that you have to consider. I know that there are at least two organizations that have worked really hard during this crisis to meet the needs of our immigrant community, and I know that they were unable to get funding because they were unable to do the application. And I also know that there is help for people to do the applications, but having been involved in the creation of two nonprofit organizations this year, I know that you don't always have the resources it takes to get licensed as a nonprofit. And I'm wondering if the Seattle Business Education Hub, we might task them with helping people to create a nonprofit status for themselves, and also if we could tap ELAP for their services, for the organizations that want to go down that route, because sometimes that's what it takes for them to get the funding. And I know that they get so caught up in the mission of what they're doing that this massive amount of paperwork involved is very hard to do. So I don't know, Michael, if you think that that is possible, but that would be an ask of mine. And the other thing is, I know you've provided for if there's additional money. I just hope that if there is additional money, that we can open the process to applications again during this crisis. I know that's not the typical thing that you do, but there are needs emerging all the time, and there are organizations emerging to serve the needs, and I just would like to make sure that we are helping as many people as possible. So that's my other thought. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you to the commission and staff. That's a, that's a lot of hours. Those are a lot of hours that you all put in, and that takes time, especially when you are being diligent and making sure that you're making those decisions or recommendations through an equity lens. I appreciate that effort that you put into it. I just had a few questions, kind of building on the mayor's comment. One of the criterion, one criterion I read said that each funding goes to agencies with other funding, where other funding will be, agencies that receive other funding, sorry, will be given a higher priority. And so I was really curious about if there's any nuance to that, because some of the beginning agencies may not receive funding currently from other sources at the moment. It may not be able to fund or put on, have the resources or bandwidth to put on a fundraising effort. I had two other questions, and then I'll just end it there. I didn't see it, but maybe it's in there. Is there any emphasis on apprenticeship programs and the jobs part? Helping to connect high school graduates or students with apprenticeship opportunities? And then the last one, I'm really curious about what were some of the biggest or most frequent barriers that you came across with some of the new agencies? Just trying to think about how we can get ahead of it in the future, and I appreciate the work that's gonna be going into the partnership with SBE.
So I can answer the question about the, the thought process that we went through in regards to funding. The idea is that we try not to have organizations solely rely on the city for funding, which is to encourage just finding funding sources from a variety of areas, because it's hard on the city. We're trying to be stewards of, you know, the city's monies and budget. And I wouldn't, it's only a part of the whole process when we're looking at the organizations. So I wouldn't say it's a big process. We also look at residents served. We also look at the targeted populations. We also look at the work that they're doing. But that's one of the reasons why we look at whether other, the organizations are getting funding from other places. Right now, though, everybody's stretched thin. They can't, most organizations that normally get funding from fundraisers and whatnot aren't getting those either because of the times. And that's been a significant, I guess, hardship for all organizations, and it's been hard for us to divvy up this budget for all the great need out there. Your other question was the apprenticeship programs. There are, there were some programs with apprenticeship-like programs, and I don't recall if we funded them. I don't think that they were exactly what you were talking about in terms of connecting the jobs. Some of them were regarding mental health and things like that. So there, but there are a couple of programs aimed at youth that have an apprenticeship thing. Same thing with like youth-to-youth apprenticeships thing as well. I might have to ask DeeDee if there wasn't a specific one funded for that. I don't, I think that we passed on one, but again, it wasn't related to jobs.
Yes, Chairman Ma, I don't think there was anything specific to apprenticeships that was applied for. The Bellevue College's Center for Career Connections does do job training on different levels, but as for specifically as apprenticeships, I don't think we received applications for that service.
I was thinking mentors. There are mentor programs. But regarding apprenticeships for work, there are not, there were no programs that applied. What was your second? I think I missed one of your questions.
It was, it was just trying to get at what were the biggest or most frequent challenges or barriers for new agencies in terms of when they were applying?
Oh, so we really wanted to, and we asked staff to find different ways that we could allow smaller agencies to be able to apply. There are certain limits and restrictions regarding, I think legally, for them to be able to get monies and things like that. And so Mayor Robinson's suggestion about connecting nonprofits to legal services sounds wise in terms of being able to help those nonprofits be able to navigate what they need, the necessary requirements, and maybe what they can apply for. There is also a minimum amount that they need to be able to use. And so all those fiscal requirements, it takes time, it takes energy, and then it takes the know-how to be able to do that. I think that's harder on smaller nonprofits. And in addition, we are trying to make the grant, the application process a lot simpler so that they don't have to write a lot of verbose application to encourage more applicants and to apply in addition to the trainings that we have tried to offer. But at the same time, there's still necessary items that the city requires, and they have to prove a lot of things. We have to make sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence in terms of that they're gonna use the money for what their, for what their program is stating. And that's also difficult when sometimes the applications come black and it's very, it's not very specific. We have to delve deeper into that sometimes.
I would just add that this time we tried to make the financial requirements easier, especially for smaller organizations, budgets of under three million dollars didn't have to complete any kind of an audit. We just asked that someone outside of the organization look at their finances just to make sure everything was in order. A letter to that effect from an outside party was perfectly fine, and I think that helps our smaller organizations to get past that hurdle.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Yeah, my gratitude to the Human Services Commission and staff. This is always such a heavy lift to go through all of this information and figure out how to best serve the people of Bellevue and the East Side. And people are suffering right now. So I think that the human services really struck a nice balance. I also wanted to point out, in case it hadn't already been pointed out, that unlike a lot of other cities, when the going gets tough, Bellevue invests more. We're not cutting our budget due to the budget impacts of COVID. In fact, we're increasing it based on CPI and population, which is something we did during the recession, the last recession around 2010. And we have committed to that, and we've continued to commit to the people, I guess, the human infrastructure of Bellevue. And I think that that's really important. So really pleased to see this come along. I understand people wanting to see more. I would also point out that next year, if we get additional cares money from the feds and also when we start collecting the point one percent sales tax, we can do more. I mean, the point one percent, of course, is housing and homeless services, but we can do more. And I think it's really important that we continue to stretch and try to reach as many people with our safety net as we possibly can. And a lot of these organizations are ones that we've supported for a long time because they do good work. So while I always welcome new organizations that might serve a new population, the ones that have been here and that are continuing to do the good work have demonstrated that they can do the good service, that they can provide these for the needs of our community. And so I'm really pleased to see us both making sure we don't have any gaps by doing new services, but also continuing to support these organizations with great track records. So I just had a comment. I'm happy to move it along as it is, and thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. I also thank Chairman Ma and the whole commission for doing this really hard work, because, you know, each of those applications, it relates directly to people and needs in the community. So every choice that you make is challenging and difficult. And so I really want to thank you and acknowledge all of that hard work along with our staff. And then the other one I really appreciate is the comment that I read that in addition to the grant-writing assistance, and I saw that the commission also went through equity awareness training before they started the review so that you can go in hopefully with a lens and a perspective that helps look at all the applications with fresh eyes. And I agree that we very much want to support and continue to support those organizations that have been helping us for a long, long time. And at the same time, I think it's a balance of the new organizations that are applying. So the fact that we have thirty new ones and we were able to fund ten, you know, hopefully in the future, we could fund all thirty of them, because I think that what we heard last time was that the application can be challenging to fill out. To be able to demonstrate financial viability can be challenging. So I really appreciate the fact that you heard the community and the application's been streamlined. Their demonstration of financial analysis and viability has also been streamlined. I think those things are really, really helpful. You know, my sense is that as we go through these, to the degree that we can continue to reach out to the service providers so that we can better figure out how to make things easier for them as a service provider to get access to the grant funding will be really important, looking at it from an equity lens. And my hope is that as we move forward, we are able to fund more broadly those areas where I saw the six hundred and ninety thousand additional funding. It looks like that is a per-year addition that's needed to meet the recommendation for the human services. So, you know, when we get into the conversation about our budget and the trade-offs and what we might want to pull from the CIP, I think we need to talk about what that budget balance looks like and where those needs are, because as you've described, the gap and needs update was done pre-COVID, and we know that this is much worse now, especially as we come out of the eviction moratorium, and we're gonna have a lot more people that are gonna be struggling with shelter, rent, and food. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chairman Ma and those Human Services Commissioners, I want to thank you for all the work you've done. And I always know that Human Service Commission is the toughest commission there is, that the hours you spend, the diligence you make to, because the demand is always so much more, so much higher than the money you have to spend. So every decision you make is a tough decision, and the choices you have to make, the material you have to pour through. And, you know, so it's a tough job. So thank you. I do have a few questions. I know that one of the things that we are working through is the questions that have been raised, you know, how you can make the system work better? How do you address the small groups and folks that don't know how to access, you know, the help they need? And I think that most of that, I think, will be the staff, and the staff will have to look at it. And I think the staff has been listening to us during this COVID-19 time. We've been asking the staff to do more capacity building, because we know that many new people are becoming much more in need. We discovered them. And during this COVID-19 crisis, that's where the money sources that we don't normally depend on. As a result, there may be less loopholes that we have to put, to put them through. So there may be other less restrictions. So I think this opportunity was to look at more, more capacity, which normally traditionally are not accessing the need. Now they're forced to. So we find that then, at the same time, the money, the new money is more available. So that's why my question is, the seven some million dollars, is it an increase from the previous year? And the four point one, I assume that's also increased. So I'm just asking, how about moving forward after COVID-19? Do you anticipate slowing down a little bit? Or how do you position yourself, especially in view of the challenges that we have asked you, taking care of some of the underrepresented groups that traditionally did not there? So I think that's a bigger question. So the second question, the most specific, if I can remember, anybody can answer me. Maybe the commission chair might be better to, is mental health. I believe that's the one issue that I didn't hear you addressing, but maybe it's there somewhere, someplace that can be emphasized, because especially through COVID-19, really has magnified a lot. You know, people have been stressed out so much, mental health is, but regardless, it's always been a problem anyway, especially among minority immigrant populations and families and, you know, even young people. So I maybe can talk about that a little bit. Thank you.
So in terms of the mental health, we definitely did try to address that. Some of the, on the commission did also talk with the youth council and just to hear their perspective and their needs. And youth mental health was one of their priorities that they've come up with themselves, and we tried to, you know, address that when we were looking at our programs. That was, we did fund programs that supported youth mental health in addition to a new Latinx-specific mental health program focusing on the youth. In regards to the increased budget, it has been increasing. I think the need is gonna be bigger, even, I think this COVID-19 fallout, my opinion, I can't speak for the commission, but is going to be for years, years to come, not just, it's not gonna be over with once COVID-19 is over. I think there's gonna be a fallout. But I'll let DeeDee discuss, give you the numbers for the budget, differentials.
Yes, the requests two years ago were five point six million. The requests this time were just over seven million, and that is the biggest increase since I've been working for Bellevue the past five years. So it's not only more, it's a lot more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes. Um, Councilmember Stokes.
I'm not. Yeah, uh, no, I appreciate the uh, all the conversations so far and particularly the work done by the uh. Commission um, and staff. It's, it's a great um. Great effort to address all these issues that we have in Bellevue uh, and, and the, the country frankly, and certainly in our area. Um. I think it's been very thoughtful comments and I, I just want to add a few things on that. I um. I'm not surprised that the, the demand for services and the money uh, requests have gone up. I mean, we're in a. We're in just something totally different than a, a recession. Um. And I agree with the chair that I don't think this is uh, something's gonna be done in over in. Any reasonably uh, time figure. Um. And the other thing we have to deal with is the, the, it, I mean, we're in a changed situation since, since two seventeen. We look back at that as, as a, a very busy time period. Uh, but. And the reality is that we have changed in Bellevue and changed in the region in dramatic ways. And um. There are more people uh, coming in and we're gonna have a lot more people coming into Bellevue. And I really appreciated the comments by. Uh, uh, about the Greater Seattle Partnership uh, and focusing on Bellevue. And with that, and with all the things that have been going on around and with our finance system, uh, just a lot of things that come together that make it very, very. Difficult for people, for a lot of people um, to uh, to be, to thrive. And um. I think we're, I, I really, and I appreciate some of the comments other councilmembers have made, uh, looking at. Uh, are we, how can we do a even better job of locating and working with? Uh, both people who are in need and with the organizations, the new organizations. How can we foster? Uh, new groups who come in and help uh, specific um. Uh, needs. Uh, and, and the number of groups and the type of people uh, that are. Uh. You know, looking at and looking for help are, are, are not the same as we've had in the past. I mean, it's such an expansion. So. You know, welcome to the world, uh, embracing um. Diversity and uh, being a very welcome, open city with all kinds of opportunities. Uh, also means that there are a lot of challenges. And I think we're uh, we're on a good path. I just do think next year. I hope we start really looking at uh, the budget and the balance of what do we do in terms of? What's our assistance to uh, private or, or, or um, you know, funding? What is the balance, the best role of that? How can we do better? And the other thing, and I, I was glad to hear that we are addressing this is. How do we step away from our traditional funding process? And, and working with the, the organizations that have been existing and embrace new organizations and new ways to look at things. Um, so I, I think we just have a, we have a great foundation. We have a great uh, programs in place. I. Uh, I just think we have um, we have more things to step up to and look at um. Because if we can serve people who need these, these services, we will be serving all of Bellevue. We'll make Bellevue a better place to be. And I think we have the resources, both uh, both in money. And in, in the will and in the frankly, the ability to um, to tackle these things. So I'm, I'm very hopeful. Uh, based on what we're doing now. But I think we're gonna have even more challenges in the years to come. So I'm hoping that we will. Carry forward from this year and um, you know, working with the commission have done great work. Um. And also working, um, I, I like the idea of talking about having more. How do we get the staff engaged in different ways and maybe a little more uh, collaboration between. Uh, different agencies within the city. How do we, how do we kinda increase our, uh, our span of um. Of working together to address these issues because uh, these things are not really um, just in little neat little. Packages. It, it spreads across a lot of different things. So I'm very hopeful. I, I certainly support the funding, the budget this year on this and um. It's been great work and uh, appreciate everything that everybody's done. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, Michael, I'm wondering, I don't know if you have an answer to this, but you've heard multiple councilmembers ask how we might be. A little more inclusive um, in granting funding to some of the new organizations that. Are coming up that, you know, meet the criteria. Where obviously you got uh, important criteria that you utilize, but how do we? How do we make it more possible for these organizations to get the funding they need? And then also my question about. How do we provide them the um, the support that they need if they want to become a nonprofit through um. So what are your thoughts on that? Is there something we could say tonight that would help that?
Well, you know, I, I, I think one of the things I just touched on a little bit is, you know, I think early on in the process, we. You know, offered some workshops to, to basically get the word out on what the requirements were early. Um, to make the, you know, application process a little bit less daunting. So I think we can continue to, to do that. I think as we find out about new organizations, we can certainly try to bring them into the fold and. Explain our process and try to be as nimble as possible. I think you've heard that we've tried to reduce some of the. Um, uh, tougher application requirements and, in terms of small um, agencies and financial reporting. So I think we can continue to look at that and, and also as you hear about, uh, as anyone uh, finds out about new agencies, I think. Um, we'd be more than happy to reach out to them.
So would they be able to, if we got more funding in for next year, would they be able to apply for next year? Would they have to wait? Two years to apply?
I, I would say, uh, under the, the normal circumstances, it would have to be next. For the next cycle, but you certainly have the uh, prerogative to direct us to try a different process.
And may I add that the commission has specifically. Had discussions and directed staff to talk about trying to get smaller nonprofits to be able to, to fund them. Maybe they don't meet the, the, the minimum of financial requirements or things like that. Um, and we've definitely tossed out a, a few ideas, but I think with the. Sometimes with a big organization like the city, the inertia, the uh, inertia of the, the system. It's hard to shift because of how big it is. Um, but, but we, the commission is definitely actively talking about it. So we, we hear the council loud and clear in regards to that. Um, and uh, we are actively trying to uh. Find solutions and different ideas.
Well, how about this? How about if we leave it up to the Human Services Commission to, to answer that tough question of how to um. Assist with the smaller not uh, organizations and maybe we'll see if the council is, has an appetite. For asking um, them to do an application process again next year instead of waiting two years as typical. Be, being that it, I mean, in my opinion, unusual circumstances require unusual responses. So. Um, I'm gonna go through again and just get a, either a yes or no on that idea. So we'll start with Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Yes, completely agree. I think that's um, that's a, it's a very good suggestion, Mayor. And I think the commission would uh, definitely uh, look forward to that. Process as well. As you rightly point out, and during a pandemic, these are different times and different needs and. Those needs require different services and uh, could be some of those services have not been serviced yet in terms of what we need to do as a city. So. Um, yes, I'd be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergstall.
Uh, yes, I support that um, recommendation or that move, that decision.
Councilmember Robertson. Happy to support that. Thanks. Councilmember Zahn.
Um, I support it with a question. Um, instead of having to completely fill out another application. If they already have an application that we've reviewed and we find it viable, but we are not funding right now because of. The amount of money that we have available. I guess my question would be. Do we have, do they have to fill out another application? Or are we not able to hold on to the application they have so that, that it's still viable? Six, nine months from now as it is today. Is that correct? I'm just wondering, Chairman Ma or uh, Michael?
I think if we were to do it again, um, we, there would have to be a discussion about the process and the needs might have changed. So. Um. It's, it's a, I think it'd be a, a discussion with the, the staff and uh, what we, how, how we need to, to go about doing that.
Okay, well, if you could consider that as you um, look at that, I definitely support um, review and relooking at this next year.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really liked the question. Uh, you have absolute council support on this. Council has been asking to build capacity, which really means to open up to non-traditional, small nonprofits to. Be able to access it. So I think that's our vision. How it's gonna be done, right? We trust that the. Commission and the staff will work through it. And the staff has heard this, I think, because I've been very encouraged to have heard. You know, lots of these discussions. Now I'm very, very pleased to hear that the commission is already talking about it. And again. If I can speak for myself, I have hundred percent support. If the council supports it, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I certainly support it. I think um, this is a case where I. I think we uh, there are three mores that we need to do. One is to be more nimble, one is to be more responsive. And one is to do more uh, funding. And uh, put those things together and I think we can, we can really meet the need and the, and the commission can really help on that. So.
Sounds like you're tasking each of us. So the council needs to allocate more funds. The commission needs to uh, help the uh, smaller organizations. And staff needs to help us do another pri- cycle next year instead of in two years. So that sounds good. All right, well, there's um. It's, it's for direction only. Um, so I guess we're going to direct, direct staff to prepare this ordinance. Approving the Human Services Commission's recommendations. Um, to be included in the budget adoption package in December. So this will come back to us for a vote. But um, would you like us, maybe we should take a um. I don't think we need to take a vote on the direction. I think you heard it. Pretty clearly. So we'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. Do, would you, uh, Michael, do you want us to take a vote? Are you okay with, with just the verbal direction?
I, 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 I think we've very clearly heard the verbal direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for listening. All your good work. Okay. Um, so then we have another study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Um, I wanted to look to the Finance Director, Tony. Is there anything else you'd like to cover tonight?
Yes, so we did have a couple more questions in your packet from Oc- from October nineteenth. If we can finish those up tonight, Mayor.
Sure, sorry about that.
Your direction.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. As long as it fits with your dir- your direction. So um, we do have a little bit of follow-up discussion from October nineteenth. A couple of questions that were raised that we wanted to bring back uh, uh, more fuller answers to you outside of the written packet. So there's three areas. Oh, actually, there's two areas. And of course, if there's any other interest, areas of interest that council's interested in. The first is the sales tax policy swap. There were some questions raised about that. And then we noticed as we were looking through the uh, collection of questions that were asked on October nineteenth. There was a theme around um, kind of the community investments that are occurring on several different fronts. And so we've kind of brought back the more holistic answer to those kind of collection of questions versus dealing with each individually. Next slide, please. So focusing, starting out on the sales tax allocation policy. The question that was raised to us at October nineteenth was, should there be more transferred from the CIP to the general fund? So as a bit of background, sales tax is the revenue stream that is unrestricted by state law. And it is split by council policy. Currently, that policy is split about seventy-five percent to the general fund and twenty-five percent to the CIP. The preliminary budget before you includes an adjustment to that existing policy. It asks uh, you to adopt a budget that includes an additional three million dollars, moving from the CIP to the general fund for years twenty-one and twenty-two only. So it's a one-time adjustment. It would return back to its traditional policy effective twenty-twenty-three. And its purpose was really to help support core services during this very unusual economic time. And to allow and to buy us a bit more time so we can get a bit more information so we can see how pandemic is actually gonna be affecting our financial position. Um, next slide, please. Before we get to that slide, let me do a quick piece of where uh, we brought forward for you tonight. So um, uh, in order to set the stage to have the ability to answer the question is, should more money move from the CIP to the general fund? Of uh, at October nineteenth, we provided you a fairly reasonable overview of the general fund. And the reductions that are included in the general fund. Tonight, K E Liu is here, Assistant Director in Finance and Asset Management. To take us through a similar look in the CIP so that you understand what's in the CIP and can help answer the question. With that, K E, I turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members and city manager. Thank you for having us here tonight. As Tony mentioned, one of the pieces of context. We want to provide you tonight is on how the CIP is balanced. And how it takes into account the guiding principles from the June twenty-second budget workshop. Starting from the process to balance CIP, the first step is the same as general fund. Establishment revenue forecast. So we know how much total resource is available for us to budget. After we know the projected resource, we then use a waterfall as a guide. You can see uh, the visual of the waterfall and you've seen that uh, before in June. Um, it shows that our first call is debt service payment. Then ongoing maintenance by financial policy that we need to maintain what we already built before we built new. And also continue the existing CIP. After all these projects are taken care of, we will know how much resource we will need, uh, we will still have available for uh, new projects. So um, starting from the first step, the total resource that was projected for uh. The seven-year CIP is six hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. Which is lower than the historical CIP mainly due to the COVID impact on some of our major revenue streams. Including sales tax, REIT and BNO tax. And the, the timing of projects that has funding resource attached to them. Um, also um, has impacted the total resource available. Um, the total, as you can see on this chart, the total CIP resource including general taxes that can be spent on any project. And more restricted revenues such as the levies that can only be spent according to um, areas identified on the ballot. Um, and also TFI that can only be spent on transportation, TFI projects. Uh, impact fees that can only be spent on transportation projects that adds capacity. And there are also grant revenues that's associated with um, s- specific projects. One thing that I do want to note on this page is that uh, see, the sales tax amount that you see on here is less. The six million transfer to the general fund that Tony just talked about. So now we have identified the resource. We follow the CIP balancing guiding principle closely as you can see on the slide. After we ensure the debt service and ongoing maintenance responsibilities are taken care of, we follow the principles. Um, as you can see, um, for the ra- for in reviewing existing and new projects. Um, you saw a visual picture to explain what uh, what waterfall does uh, in the first slide that I uh, walked you through. Now this table shows you how much we have allocated to each layer of the waterfall in the preliminary twenty-one through twenty-seven. Seven C, CIP plan. So first we have to meet our debt obligations of one hundred and seventy-nine million. Uh, which is about twenty-seven percent of the total CIP, which also includes four years of the TFI repayment. Uh, that's roughly five million per year starting in twenty-twenty-four. Then you have the ongoing maintenance takes up roughly twenty percent of the total resource. And then the next category, category number three is the levy revenues. We have currently three uh, levies, parks, transportation and fire. They're uh, all restricted. Can be only used on the level products identified on the ballot. This waterfall may seem straightforward, but when it comes to balancing CIP. It isn't as simple as just following the waterfall. The follow, uh, we use the waterfall as a guide, but it never generates enough to meet the needs ahead of us. So this year was no different. In order to have the thirty-one million available for new projects. There were some additional choices that we made. Um, including first removing inflation. including first removing inflation from the ongoing programs in the second category on the waterfall. This allowed all the ongoing programs to continue at current levels, although they will not grow by inflation in our years. This is something that will need to be reviewed in the future. It was also determined that there were a few projects that will not be fully constructed during the CIP, seven-year CIP, which includes the Westlake Semamish Parkway Phase Three, Maidenborough Bay Park Phase Two. And as always, there are small adjustments that occurs in every CIP, such as chewing up the new costs or new assumptions. For example, we chewed up the Fire Station Five costs to current estimates this time. After ones through three are taken care of, what's left for us to balance is the existing CIP. That includes discrete and ongoing programs and also new projects. So which totals $211 million if you add these two numbers up. In the next few slides, I will be walking you through how these two CIP categories are balanced according to the guiding principles. Overall, mainly due to the color of money issue, CIP balancing is just not as simple as it seems to be, and it shifts with each movement of the projects. First and foremost, our first guiding principle is conservation priorities. Roughly 120 million of the total 221 million, which is over half, has a direct linkage to conservation priorities. You can see some examples ranked by the seven-year total cost on the slide. I will not go to the details of each project today, but just highlight a few. So first, you will see the five TFI projects together accounts for about 49 million in the CIP, followed by the affordable housing contingency of roughly 2 million per year and totals 14 million over seven years. You can also see the other projects on the slide as well that delivers conservation priorities. Also, the CIP guiding principles is the, another guiding principle is the community needs. In the, in this category, the CIP includes funding to build Fire Station Five. It also includes funding for neighborhood improvements project, including neighborhood sidewalks, neighborhood traffic safety, Vision Zero, public art, and some other projects. Then we have some other guiding principles, including timing, urgency, mandates, and financial factors. On this list, you can see that the projects that may seem less attractive but are essential needs for the city. For example, Parks Resource Management side is a big one. The infrastructure is failing and inadequate for Parks Department to maintain efficient operations. This project included the study, design, and construction funding for a new facility. Another major one that we have is city fuel system replacement. The fuel tanks that support all city departments vehicles are reaching the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. Then we have Bellevue Way HOV land falls into the phasing and scaling category of the principles. The project funds the design and right-of-way acquisition of Phase One of Bellevue Way HOV land, setting it up to be eligible to compete for grants opportunities when they arise. Besides the urgent needs and phasing, we also have some mandates that we have to meet, including the 130th TOD parking lot and the major complaint update. And we also heard council feedback on July 22nd Budget Workshop that we should leverage grant or partnership of funding and make sure we're ready when the grant opportunities becomes available. So you can see the grant match program that sets aside funding for local match. This funding will allow us to be more competitive in the grant program, grant or partnership programs to leverage those funds. Overall, this is how we balance the CIP according to the guiding principles. Although the CIP is balanced, I also want to highlight some risks on the CIP that we need to consider. So first, of course, the risks on revenue recovery is also uncertain on the CIP side. This is the same as general fund. COVID has added risks, mainly the sales, BNO, and REIT revenue projections. Second, due to the constrained resource available, the construction cost for larger transportation project will be funded through, will have to be funded through other channels or delayed into the 2028 and 2029 CIP. That's, that's including the Bellevue Way HOV land construction and the construction of Westlake Semamish Parkway Phase Three and 150th corridor. As I mentioned earlier, the inflation is removed from ongoing maintenance projects, which means if we do not recover those factors as we know more about the economic recovery, we will see a level of service impact. Another risk that has been impacting more general fund but also relates to CIP is that we currently don't have a good mechanism to pay for the new infrastructure maintenance within the CIP. So the maintenance costs of additional infrastructures as we complete those projects have been adding pressure on the general fund. Last but not least, CIP also gets funding from state through state shared revenue and state grants. Although state hasn't made any change to the distribution yet, as state gas tax and other revenues are also impacted by COVID, the allocation may change depending on state legislation. So with that, I will turn it back to Tony.
Thank you, K E. So bringing us back to the sales tax allocation summary. Understanding from October 19th, and we took a look at the general fund and today, understanding the CIP. As you heard from K E, it is continued to be a constrained CIP. And the preliminary budget does include that $3 million annually. Staff believes it's fiscally prudent and reasonable in light of the economic challenges ahead of us. It allows us to maintain some core services in the general fund that will kind of provide us some time and buy us time while we learn more about the COVID and the pandemic economic impact. It's important for me to note, it does return back to normal policy levels in 2023. And if council does wish to adjust the $3 million to a higher number, it would require CIP trade-offs. If you want to adjust it to a lower number, it will require general fund trade-offs. So to answer the question on, should we bring forward additional sales tax allocation summary? This is an analysis of what that CIP represents. And then I have one more little question to answer from October 19th. And that is that there were several areas, as we looked at all the questions that were asked, that were overlapping regarding community investments. So in order to not just kind of have bifurcated or isolated answers to all the questions, a simple summary, kind of to bring forward and to kind of answer it in a more broad way, the following things are included and are not included in the preliminary budget. You heard just, just now from Human Services, so you're very well versed in what's included in the preliminary budget regarding Human Services. Regarding affordable housing, I want to make sure that it's clear, we have maintained our contributions to ARCH and the CIP contingency. That's about a little less than $3 million annually. House Bill 1406, which was adopted by this council about a year ago, I think it was just before the mid-by last year, was actually a sales tax credit against the state sales tax. There is no increase in sales tax. It was a credit against the state sales tax. Is $625,000 annually, and that is included in this preliminary budget. We also increased some limited-term staffing to support the affordable housing initiatives to ensure that those are kept on pace with council expectations. And what is not included in this budget is the 1%, the 0.1% sales tax, or commonly known as House Bill 1590. It is not included. It will come back to council under separate cover with a work plan. And when it comes back under separate cover in a work plan, we'll also bring forward a budget amendment at that time. So at this point, that's not included in the preliminary budget. Regarding homelessness and mental health, the preliminary budget continues to maintain fire cares. And in fact, fire care is actually increased in 2020, coming off the adoption of the last EMS levy. We also are maintaining our existing current homelessness programming, including our homelessness coordinator. And we've actually increased funding to support homelessness to the tune of about $450,000 a year in this preliminary budget. We continue to have access to vital services. Obviously, we are maintaining our mini-city halls, our police substations, our community centers, our translation services, all the ways in which the public currently accesses us. They may all be open facilities right now, but all the phones are still ringing. And as people need us, we are still available, and this preliminary budget continues to support those services. The last item on this list that was on the list of questions that we saw were regarding diversity, equity, inclusion. This budget does invest in a new program regarding cultural liaisons. It also invests in additional training. And then, of course, it continues to maintain our diversity advantage program, our Eastside Pathways programs, our ADA compliance, along many others, like our Title VI coming out of transportation. All of those things are still included in the preliminary budget. So kind of give a more holistic view of what's included in the prelim besides just kind of the isolated answers. And with that, Mayor, I believe our last slide is just a reminder about the upcoming meeting schedule. And I will turn it back to you for questions, concerns, other interests that council might have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let me see if I can get everybody. There we go. All right. Are there questions or comments on this last part of the presentation? You can raise your hand if you have a question or a comment, and I'm not seeing any. So, Tony, I think you did it. Oh, Councilmember Lee, go ahead. I can't hear you yet.
This, I think it's important to acknowledge that we think it's a great work. It's a good thing to explain to us how the sales tax and CIP proportion and what we are using the money for and what's needed. Thank you. Very good. This is a great, great presentation. Thanks.
Thank you for speaking for all of us there. Okay, great. Now I think we can move on to the next study session item, Mr. Miyake.
Yeah, yes, Mayor. The next study session item is on the South County Correctional Entity, also known as SCORE. And it's with, it is, it puts in front of you this evening is an overview of the proposed inter-local agreement for jail services. Just by way of background, the city currently has an interlocal agreement with SCORE that is set to expire this year on December 31st. Now, staff have, representing Bellevue and SCORE, have completed negotiations on a new five-year agreement that will be effective January 1st of 2021. Tonight, tonight's staff is seeking council feedback and direction on the interlocal agreement for SCORE between SCORE and the city. And then based on council direction, staff will place the interlocal agreement on a future consent agenda for final action. Joining us this evening is Major Mark Tarantino from the Bellevue Fire Department, as well as Sergeant John Burgos. And additional folks here tonight are Assistant Chief Patrick Arpin and Fiscal Manager Bev Ni. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Major Tarantino. You're muted. There you go.
All right about that. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and City Manager, the Police Department would like your review and consideration for the SCORE jail interlocal agreement. Next slide, please. We're going to briefly do a flyover on the background and history, the impacts of COVID-19, the fiscal impact, and the direction we need from council. The background basically is that SCORE opened in 2011 and was funded by seven different cities. Bellevue is currently one of 40 cities that currently contracts with SCORE in some capacity. Bellevue entered into the contract with SCORE in August of 2012. And we've had that contract amended 10 times. And like the city manager stated, the contract is up at the end of this year. And we are starting with a new contract with your consent in 2021, which would be a five-year contract. Next slide, please. One of the big drivers and impacts of our budget has been jail costs. But one of the few positive things in, about COVID-19 this year, besides traffic, would be the impact on our jail costs. Because of the courts, the impacts of COVID-19 on the courts, the jails, and our own booking standards and directives, our budget has really been affected in a positive way, and our jail costs have gone down. At the beginning of the year and prior to COVID, we were averaging about 30 to 35 inmates a day in SCORE jail. In recent months, we've been down to five and six, and recently 11 beds for the day, which adds up to big cost savings for us. The reason why, I'm sure you all know, is because the courts and the jails and the Police Department are trying to protect not only inmates and subjects that interact with jails from COVID, but also we're trying to protect our workforce and our ability to sustain our mission and also be smart in regards to social distancing. As far as the Police Department goes, we have changed our booking procedures where we try and minimize our impacts and our interactions with subjects we deal with. We still hold people accountable, but perhaps because of COVID rules, we may or may not book that subject in the jail depending on what offense they've committed. The current contract we're looking at also is waiving the booking fees. Normally, when you book a subject into King County or SCORE, they charge a booking fee. And SCORE, SCORE jail is currently waiving that fee for 2021. The other aspect of this contract that really benefits the Police Department is we put a clause in there that reserves the right for us to amend the contract based on COVID issues. Like I said, we have taken our guaranteed bed rate down from 25 to nine in this contract. But if crime tip ticks up, or if COVID usage or COVID issues are less because of the vaccine, we, we and the attorneys put in place verbiage that will be able to protect us and amend the contract to hopefully give us a better fiscal deal. The next slide will talk about the fiscal impact. As you can see with the fiscal impact, the jail monthly cost is approximately $60,000,000 lower than it was prior to COVID. That's a monthly rate. And like I said, the, the booking fees have been waived by, by SCORE because they know the impacts that COVID is having on their agencies that are using their facilities. The total contract value for this is estimated to be 5.4 million. And on the next slide, you can see the numbers. And there are the numbers. You can see that in 2019, we were around 1.1 million. And we've dropped down at a projected rate of $600,000 this year. So it's a substantial savings for us. We, we did crunch the numbers, or Bev Ni, who's our fiscal manager, crunched the numbers and came up with the, the projections you see above. With that said, what we're asking, next slide, is for your review, your feedback and direction for the draft SCORE interlocal agreement for jail services. And based on your input, you know, hopefully at some point, we'll get on the consent calendar for resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement. And that's all I really have. And I'm sure you guys might have some questions for us. We'll, we'll be more than happy to try and answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you, I can see you. So can you let me know by raising your hand if you have a comment or a question? Okay, I see Deputy Mayor. I see Councilmembers Robertson, Zahn, and Lee. So we'll start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Major Tarantino, thanks for being here tonight and for the presentation. Couple of quick questions for you. So are all these rates individually negotiated with all these 40 cities? Or are these standard rates that all the cities are Or are these standard rates that all the cities are paying the same rate, regardless if it's the, you know, the mental health or the medical beds or the guaranteed beds, et cetera? Can you speak to that for a second?
Well, we did do a cost comparison. We reached out to several cities, and the contract rates are the same across the, across the various cities. We didn't contact all 40 cities, but we, I believe we contacted five of them. They are all the same. And to answer the other part of your question, the rates are different for an inmate's needs, whether they be medical or mental health beds. But I, my understanding, and Sergeant Burgos can correct me, I believe the guaranteed beds rate is also, our guaranteed rates for our guaranteed beds are for both mental health and medical issues. But John, can you speak to that?
The agreed-upon guaranteed beds would include medical and psych beds. So as long as we have a vacant bed available, they're guaranteed to house that inmate.
Got it. Thank you, and good to see you again, John. One more question, Mayor. Also, you had mentioned SCORE and the, the cost savings there with, with the pandemic. Have there been any outbreaks at SCORE to date? And also, could you just speak a little bit to the criteria for, you spoke a little bit about it, but just like to hear a little bit more in terms of the determination, if you're going to take someone down to SCORE or not?
Sure, I'm, I'm not aware, and maybe John could speak to this. I'm not aware of any outbreaks at SCORE, nor have there been any outbreaks at the Police Department. We have had some officers that have been affected, but not while on duty. And your second part of your question was about our booking directive. Of course, I didn't bring that to, tonight for this presentation, but I can tell-
Yeah, a little outside the scope here, sorry.
But I can tell you in general terms, for low-level misdemeanor crimes, we are not booking people into jail. Now, with that said, if, if we have somebody who's a threat to the community, who is repeatedly causing problems for the community, we are giving our supervisors the discretion to kind of go around our booking directive as long as it's in the interest of public safety to book that person. But for the most part, for low-level crimes like theft or malicious mischief or obstructing, we are asking our officers to still hold them accountable, but by doing that via summons in the mail as opposed to booking them in. And that protects our, our workforce from the close interaction with COVID, and it also protects the jail staff from interacting closely with people.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. I think that jail contracts are very, very routine, and it's something that we need to do because it's our obligation to cover the jail costs for people who are arrested for and/or are serving times for misdemeanors in Bellevue. So SCORE is great. They have a lot of services that other jails may not, like our other contractor Izaco may not have the mental health. So I think it's something we need to do. I'm happy for it to come back on consent. I also wanted to emphasize another reason I think this is really important, and that's because the King County Executive has said he wants to close the King County Jail. The King County Jail is one of the ones that people, that cities go to for inmates that are more sensitive, that may have addiction problems, may have mental health issues. And if we don't have a contract for a jail that has those services, our inmates will not be well-served, and the city, the people will not be well-served. So I'm really pleased that we have this at a lower rate. I think that that's really, really good. So thank you for that. I don't know if it was your, your keen negotiating, but it's nice to save a little bit of money. I just had a question. Whatever happened to the Wapato contract?
John, can you answer that?
I, from my understanding, there was a study done, but it just wasn't, I don't know. They even took a trip out there to kind of look at the facility. But overall, there was an agreement found to, to start that contract. I think that was a good thing, because from my understanding, Wapato filed for bankruptcy the past year or two.
Well, good. Well, I, I remember when we passed that, and I didn't see it on the list, and I was just, I was just curious. But, you know, having Izaco and SCORE is really important, as well as King County, as long as it's open. So thanks for bringing this to this, to us. I support having it come on consent. Thanks.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you for bringing this before us and negotiating and really understanding the rates and what we need to do. I had a question about, you mentioned it's a five-year contract and that there are clauses for COVID. So is that the only time we renegotiate rates? Or is there a clause that says that there is an annual renegotiation? Or as our needs might change? I was trying to understand that a little bit.
My understanding is there is a clause in there that we can renegotiate the contract with 90, I believe it's 90 days notice. But maybe Joyce or John can, can add a little flavor to that. Or maybe not.
Joyce, are you there? This is Brad.
I'm here.
There you go.
I am. Could you repeat the question and the comment, please?
Oh, my question was whether the renegotiation of fees and rates was only related to COVID or if there is an opportunity to renegotiate as our needs change one way or the other, since it's a five-year contract.
As, as I understand the contract, it is, the renegotiation, for the most part, would be as it relates to post-COVID. You have the COVID era, and then you have the post-COVID. And I don't believe that there's a wide latitude to renegotiate other terms. There, you know, I think we have found the folks at SCORE Jail to be very accommodating and pretty flexible. So I think if we had a big change in our circumstances, we certainly could put another issue back on the table. But for the most part, the contract is the contract, and the costs are capped. So I think that that was one of our major concerns. So other than that, I think the contract is pretty well-fixed for the five years, with the exception of post-COVID.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you very much for that. And I really support this because I think that of the options that we have, SCORE having the ability to have both mental and medical beds is important. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Major Tarantino, for bringing the good news to us. We actually are going to save some money, so I definitely support it. And my question is, what and how do we do with the saving? You mentioned it's like a million, one million, two, now get down to six, seven, eight thousand, $100,000. Where, where'd the money go?
That would be a question for the chief or the assistant chief. You know, we've been blessed to be, we've been authorized to be fully staffed, and I'm guessing some of that money will go towards that. But maybe Bev or Assistant Chief can chime in on that.
Patrick, are you trying to unmute?
Sorry about that. My mouse disappeared on me. Couldn't find mute button. That's a good question, Councilmember, you know, how our budget fluctuates. There's a lot of things that are not accounted for in our, on our budget, particularly like overtime. And so some of it gets shifted to, to cover those type of anticipated costs. So I think it's, it just depends on what our needs are for that particular year or that time period.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I, this is great, and I obviously approve it. But I think what is also interesting is maybe, you know, I guess there's a chance to reexamine the needs, and would be interesting to see what the experience is over this time period and after COVID, which one of these days we'll get past that. It'd be interesting to see if we can continue to have a little different policy in terms of booking people into a facility. And so I think that's a posity that comes out of this, is, is having a chance to look at different ways to do things. So I think it's been very interesting, and we're saving money, and perhaps having maybe a little better processing overall. So I think it's great.
Councilmember Barksdale, did you have something you wanted to say?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mayor. So first, I, I support this returning on the consent agenda. Just wanted to say thanks to the Police Department for prioritizing a facility that has mental health and medical services. So thank you.
I just had a question. I don't know if you can answer it tonight, but the crime statistics. Have we seen an increase in crime during COVID? And have we seen an increase in incarcerations during COVID? I'm assuming not, given this data, but I just wanted to ask.
We, our, our inmate population has gone down month after month after month. We've had a slight uptick in the last month. We went from an average of, I'll just read off the stats for 2020. So we're averaging about 28 subjects a day in SCORE at the beginning of the year. Then we went from, from that to 35 to 19, and then COVID hit probably mid-March. So we went down in March to 19. And then we went from 19 to 5, to 5, to 5, to 5. Then we had an uptick in August to 6, and then 11 in September. And as far as the crime stats go, I don't have them in front of me. I know we've gone up in a couple areas, like commercial birds, and some of that is related to one particular day that we would rather forget about. But overall, I believe that crime stats are, are down. Maybe John or the Assistant Chief can speak further on it, but I believe overall, crime stats are, are down, except for commercial burglaries.
Well, maybe we can have a discussion at the end of the year about this, because it's pretty interesting to, to wonder, you know, what's influencing what. But I think that you're getting a strong direction to return with a resolution authorizing execution of the ILA with SCORE on a future consent calendar. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we have a land use item, but how about we take a 10-minute break? How about we come back at 8:05? We're moving on to ordinance 6542. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. The matter in front of you is with respect to Puesta del Sol conditional use permit. In front of you this evening is final action on the Bellevue School District's application of a conditional use permit to demolish the Bellwood Elementary School and construct a new school. This matter was first in front of council back in October 19th for initial consideration. And tonight, as you mentioned, staff will be seeking final action from council by way of ordinance 6542. Joining us this evening is Nick Malasinos, our Deputy City Attorney, as well as Lidstead, our Land Use Director from Development Services. Both are available for a very quick presentation, and then are available to answer questions that the council may have before you take action on ordinance 6542. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. This is process three, quasi-judicial proceeding, and the hearing examiner recommends approval and no appeal if that recommendation was filed. This matter is now before council for a decision. This is a closed-record proceeding, and the council's decision must be based on the complete record developed before the hearing examiner, the recommendation of the hearing examiner, and comments of a community council with jurisdiction. The alternatives before the council are to approve the application as recommended by the hearing examiner, to approve the application with additional modifications or conditions, to remand the application to the hearing examiner and director for additional hearing, limited to specific issues identified by the council, or to deny the application. For convenience on the council, in the event council votes to approve the application as recommended by the hearing examiner, staff prepared proposed ordinance number 6542, which was included in your packets. The proposed ordinance approves the application, subject to the conditions set forth in the conditions of approval section of the hearing examiner's recommendation, and also incorporates the findings of fact and conclusions of law. In the event council makes a different decision, staff will prepare an ordinance following council's direction to be presented at a later meeting. Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, the council members will again have an opportunity to disclose on the record any ex parte communications they may have had with the applicant or others supporting or opposing the application. To most efficiently enable council members' disclosures, staff have searched all emails received at council@bellviewwatt.gov and individual council member's city email addresses. Therefore, councilors need to only disclose any contacts received other than through city accounts from October 19th to present. If any ex parte communications are disclosed, a council member should state on the record the name of the person who contacted you, the date or approximate date of the contact, the method of the communication, and the substance of the communication. So now I'm asking the council members to disclose any ex parte contacts that they have to disclose at this time.
Councilmember Robertson.
Nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Lee. You're muted. Councilmember Lee, if you could unmute and say that again, that'd be great.
Yes, I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Stokes.
Nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Zahn.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so can you, I can see you, so if you raise your hand, if you have comments or questions or, uh, Mr. Miyake, did you want to say something?
No, Mayor. It was just a sudden gesture, I think.
Okay, so council members, I can see you. If you want, have a comment or a question, if you raise your hand, I will call on you. And seeing none, I will ask the Deputy Mayor to make a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 6542 approving the conditional use permit application. Permit file number 18130014-LB submitted by the Bellevue School District to demolish Bellwood Elementary School to construct a new one-to-three-story, 102,143rd square foot elementary school, Puesta del Sol, on 9.93 acres, located at 301, 151st Place Northeast.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. It's very exciting to see progress in this during a pandemic. It's wonderful. So thank you for that. So the next thing we have is Resolution 9834. Mr. Miyake, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The matter in front of you tonight is adoption of the Bellevue Economic Development Plan. And just by way of background, the process on updating this plan began back in July of 2019. You've had several sessions, I believe it's been around eight sessions, with staff as well as the consultants working on this plan. And so tonight, as you mentioned, Resolution 9834 is in front of you to adopt the Economic Development Plan. This was last provided to the council back on September 21st, I believe, and it is in front of you tonight for adoption. And with that, joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, the Director of the Community Development Department, as well as Jessica Nader, our Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as Philly Marsh, our Economic Development Manager, for a brief presentation to answer any questions you might have prior to your taking Resolution 9834 up. Matt?
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're excited to be back here this evening to present the final economic development strategic plan for your consideration and final adoption. Just to refresh the council's memory on this subject, this is a five-year plan that we're looking to institute starting tonight and running through the next five years. Uh, just to refresh the council's, um, memory on this subject, this is a five-year plan that we're looking to institute starting tonight and running through the next five, uh, fiscal calendar years. There are a number of new topical areas that are, um, in the plan that were not in our previous plan. Um, I'm going to hand it off here to Mr. Canado here in a minute to walk through some of those, um, for refresher and then to take any questions the council may have. Uh, as we introduce and bring this back to you tonight, I just want to take special note and thank all the different parties that participated in this. Uh, City Manager Miyake said, uh, this has been, um, quite a labor of love over the last several months and through stops and starts through the the COVID pandemic. Uh, there were, uh, a number of leadership team members at the city representing different facets of different departments that interact with and overlap with economic development. There have been stakeholder groups that have been formed, um, externally to give, uh, the city staff feedback on ideas that we are bringing forward in the plan, uh, and numerous Q and A sessions through the, through the entire process. So, it's been a lengthy process to get here this evening over the last year or so, and we're very proud of the work that we're bringing to you for adoption tonight. So I'm going to hand it off, uh, to Jesse, who will walk you through the high points of the plan, and then we'll be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Mac, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. As Mac said, we're very happy to be at this point tonight. Um, it's been great engagement over the last year with the council and the various members of the business community and our community partners, um, to develop the plan that's in front of you tonight. Um, all of the feedback from council and stakeholders has made this a plan that really reflects one, where Bellevue is, and two, where it really wants to be after this recession and after this growth phase that are happening simultaneously. And this plan does address both aspects of that, which we are very happy, uh, to be able to do. The emphasis on diversity of backgrounds, diversity of perspectives, diversity of industry in the city, um, going forward reinforces that Bellevue does welcome the world, both in residence and in terms of business. Um, it's broad and touches many of the areas that have come up in council discussion on other topics tonight, including capacity building to help us identify new and growing partners to help us deliver service to the business community and our residents. Uh, small business and diversity and entrepreneurship to help grow equitably going forward. Workforce, uh, to make sure that the residents of Bellevue have access to the educational opportunities that they need to get jobs in the city and to help those, um, in other parts of the region also access the great jobs here in our community. Um, and increased emphasis on retail and making sure that our commercial areas continue to be vibrant and strong and well-recognized, um, not just in Bellevue, but across the region and across the nation in terms of us being a retail leader. A new emphasis on the creative economy to help make sure that Bellevue has the diverse, um, arts and cultural scene that a city of our size, uh, should have and our residents are expecting. And additional support for tourism to help make sure that Bellevue again welcomes the world, whether it's for a day or for a lifetime, uh, that that will happen. Um, so I think that the plan, as you have it in your packet, uh, will both help enhance what is unique about Bellevue and also continues to attract the innovative people and companies from around the world that makes Bellevue such a fantastic place. The different elements of the plan also help knit together things the city has been working on in multiple areas to really enhance community development and again, make sure that Bellevue continues to be that vibrant community, um, that beautiful city and park that we all know and love. So with that, I think we can, uh, open it up to comments and questions.
Okay, great. So I'm going to call on people in this order, starting with Councilmember Lee, then Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Zon, Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Stokes, and then myself. So Councilmember Lee, would you like to start us off as the fiscal?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would not be a fiscal hot if we have a very robust economic growth, you know, we don't have to worry about money. So this is why we're here to look at a plan that actually can help, uh, our economy continuing to be so, uh, endowed. So thank you very much. Uh, I really appreciate the work that's been done. I think the staff has been done, has been, has done a great job. I mean, the last year or two, uh, they've been working very hard to develop a plan. Now it looks great, looks a very complete, looks a lot of good stuff in it. And I think the consultant putting a lot of, uh, statistics, a lot of numbers. Now we know where we stand. We have metrics to follow. We have lots of, uh, uh, you know, objectives and goals that we can, uh, work with, work on. And I think we also call anything with a lot of departments, you know, so I think economic development, you know, i- it's got the roadmap. And the key is that we need to keep, you know, to be specifically driving it. Uh, it's a good, a lot of good ideas, a lot of, uh, activities, a lot of, uh, you know, thoughts. But we need to also making sure that we have ownership to drive it with specific resources and realities. So I really appreciate what they've done so far. A- another thing I'll add is this COVID-nineteen, they've done a great job with COVID-nineteen. So, and I, we can hear, we heard that Brian McGovern from the GSP, Great Seattle Partnership, he came and he's very impressed. I'm, I just want to acknowledge him, thank him to come to talk to us, uh, tell us how he has been working well with the city and the staff. And I think it's a great thing to hear that. Two years ago, you never heard of Bellevue. Now he wants to pivot. He wants Bellevue to lead. I think this is a great, uh, uh, comment, great endorsement for what, you know, we are doing. I do have, however, a couple of things I'd like to mention. One, you know, is I've been working well with the staff the last few months and I also appreciate, want to acknowledge, they have been working with me, listened to me, and we've been working together on a couple of things. And a number of things, but two of them especially stood out. One is the, uh, transportation sector, section, uh, which is included in the, uh, staff's plan, workforce strategy and this and tactics. Uh, number three is the transportation section. Uh, it's included there that says, uh, we will be working through transportation with multimodal and advanced options. And I've been talking to staff to say we need to be a little more specific. You know, maybe we need to, uh, add one of the thing that staff agreed and they've included in the refinement. It's a separate piece of, uh, summary of what they have listened, they have heard from the council members and which I add is that we need to emphasize a specific, uh, specific, more specifically what we're talking about. I'm referring to ACES technology, which is autonomous, con- connected, electric, shared technologies. And as I, I would like to see that this would be something added onto the existing place where this has been talked about, rather than generally speaking, you know, uh, multimodal and other advanced options. I think it would be important for us to have an example of what we can be working on, working at. So I would like to see that added. So secondly, I also mentioned it's important to look for s- uh, more funding, uh, mechanism and when, which is, uh, T I F, Tax Incremental Financing. This is something that the state doesn't allow, so we can't really do very much about. But I think this can be a very good legislative agenda for the city. Uh, we've been working on it for a long time. Not we, per se, but the many people, businesses included in the state. But, you know, we have had some challenges, but now I think there's opportunity because of COVID-nineteen. We're all going to be looking at economic downturn for as long as we, we don't know how long we. So I think we need to have as much tools, as much mechanism we can have to help our economy. So I suggest that we would consider, well, put on this as our legislative agenda to work with the legislature, with, with, with the partners such as GSP and PSRC's Economic Development Board to work on having the state looking at allowing us to have tax incremental financing. So, I have lots of other things today, but I just want to mention this and then I hope that, you know, we can have a more discussion on it and come back to see how we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, you know, I think this is a great plan. Um, I, I, I did like, um, uh, Brian McGowan's, uh, comments, um, at, at, at the beginning of our, um, session today and, um, you know, Bellevue is that bright shining light. I've said that before and, and continue to do so. So it sounds to me, um, and I'm not sure he's still with us, but it sounds to me like, uh, he wouldn't mind we changed it to the Greater Bellevue Partners. Or Jesse, perhaps you could follow up with him on that. Um, but i- i- in all seriousness, and, and this has come up once before and, and Brian even made the comment about not knowing about Bellevue. I'm all for, um, a robust regional approach. Um, and I know this is a very, um, nimble, uh, plan here and I know we can shift, but I, I just, and I will continue to bring this up where if we don't take the lead, if we don't have Bellevue first, how are we going to get past not, um, being recognized for the city that we are? If we keep joining organizations where Bellevue was not even in the name, um, how are we going to be growing our brand and educating not only regionally and nationally and internationally who we are? It's just a thought. Again, I'm all for a strong regional approach, you know, be it G, GSP, be it the Innovation, um, you know, Triangle, et cetera. That makes a lot of sense, but I'm, but my, my biggest concern with this, because the rest of the plan is, is fantastic. And I've loved, I loved where we are right now and where we started. Um, but that's just top of mind for me. And, you know, I can't wait for a day when, when our economic development team goes to these trade shows and you mentioned Bellevue and, oh, yes, Bellevue, fantastic. That's where Amazon is, Microsoft, that's where T-Mobile has their headquarters, fantastic. Tell me more. I want to put my business in Bellevue. So, um, something I'll bring up again. I also appreciate the, um, the Bellevue Chamber weighing in on, on the plan as well. They actually called out three things that I think all of us, uh, care deeply about and really appreciate in the plan as well. You know, the importance of childcare and the workforce, uh, the emphasizing the retail strategies and retaining local goods and services for our residents. And then also emphasizing, as, uh, Councilmember Lee did as well, partially there, about the importance of our multimodal system here as well. So, so again, Mac and Jesse and Philly, great, great job. Really endorse this plan moving forward and thank you for all your hard work.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Zon?
Yes, well, I am so excited to adopt this plan. It indeed is a labor of love with many, many hands. And it's really near and dear to me because I've been in the Economic Development, um, organization for many years, which brings the vitality to our region and Bellevue leads the way. So we need to continue to do that and I look forward to our partnership with the Greater Seattle Partner, especially if they want to help tell our story and help us move our vision forward. So, you know, when I think about our plan, right, it's about business, large and small and diverse. It's about the people, the jobs, the vibrancy. It's about our quality of life and really looking at the arts and all of the different things that make Bellevue great now and will be even better in the future. And ultimately, it's about our partnerships. It's about making sure that our staff have the resources that you need to be able to carry out this very, very ambitious plan. And so I, I like the fact that we have tied in diversity, equity and inclusion, having a variety of housing choices, addressing transportation challenges, because those are all things that come into what we need to do. And I especially appreciate that when we look at our desired outcomes, that we talk about resiliency in our local economy, having that strong regional economy and sustainable and equitable city. So, um, to that end, I, I do, would like to tie one thing to our plan that I don't see. And that is that when I review our, um, latest draft on the Environmental Stewardship Initiative, there is a Strategy M-one for Sustainable District. So it talks about creating an eco-district that brings together property owners, tenants, city and other groups. And so to me, I'd like to see that more directly tied into our economic development plan because I think that having an eco-district is another opportunity for us to draw the economic development into our city. And I'd like that to be specifically highlighted and I think that would be an important piece. So otherwise, I, I just love where this is and I look forward to, um, working together with staff and my colleagues to, to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale?
All right, thank you. Um, so that's, I'm just full of gratitude to, to you, Jesse and Philly for all the work that you put in in terms of outreach and folding in and weaving in all the feedback, all the feedback that you've gotten, um, into a cohesive and, and plan that will continue to, um, deliver as well as one that will, um, will adjust as, as sort of as our landscape and our environment adjusts. So really, uh, excited about it and, um, looking forward to celebrating, uh, at some nightlife event once, uh, post-COVID.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, I think we all are. Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll echo my colleagues. Um, this has been a tremendous effort and I'm really pleased with how the economic development plan turned out. You know, um, it was great to hear the fellow from the Seattle Partners, um, talk about Bellevue. We are a city on the rise and we didn't get to be where we are by accident. We got here because of the people that came before us and the staff members who came before these staff members who set the table to make Bellevue, uh, you know, ready from a zoning perspective, ready from a welcome to, you know, from a business welcoming perspective, getting the right mix of services and zones and development. And while still always, always, always keeping our eye on the ball for quality of life for the people who live in this city. And this economic development plan continues that work. And I think that we, but we can't just rest on our co- on our laurels because the work is going to need to continue. We are in a very unique position right now, um, very well positioned for lots of investment and growth and we want to make sure it continues to be shaped in such a way that it lifts the whole city up and that it continues to provide that high quality of life. So that's where this economic development plan is so critical, to make sure that we have a roadmap, to make sure that we stay on track. And I think that, um, I'm grateful for the council members that came before me who valued investment, who valued quality of life. And I hope that the council members that come after us continue to do the same because Bellevue is going to continue to be that bright shining star on the hill if we keep our eye on the ball and this helps us do that. So, um, thanks for everything. Um, I'm ready to act on this tonight. If anyone, I've heard a couple of my colleagues mention things they wanted to have changed. If we're going to have some motions on that, let's do it and consider those and move this on because it is a great, great effort and I'm excited to pass it.
Great. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited, uh, about this and particularly, uh, about, um, and, and, and there, there's a reason for it being Greater Seattle. Uh, I mean, I appreciate the Deputy Mayor's comments and we all, you know, we're all, uh, promoting Bellevue and I think Bellevue is the leader and, um, but the reality is that what we're working with is a regional piece, including a couple of other, uh, Snohomis County, all these other things. So, actually it increases Bellevue's, uh, ability to, um, develop economically, uh, being part of that. The interesting thing about it is actually we are leaders in a lot of ways with that. Um, and I'm very, very happy to see this, um, and, and to have, uh, Brian McGowan come and, and, uh, talk to us today and what he said about, uh, Bellevue. Uh, I was involved, uh, when I was mayor, uh, two thousand sixteen and seventeen with the Economic Development Council uh, in working through that whole piece of that ended up in greater, um, the Greater Seattle Partners, uh, working with the, uh, Governor Greg Warren, the whole group, um, and putting that whole piece together. And so it's exciting to see it really, uh, taking off and, um, I think it's, um, it's something that we have, um, benefited a lot from, uh, because being in a smaller group was not as, as good as this. So, I, that, that's very exciting. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made along the way in, in our discussions tonight because this is a great economic development, uh, program and, and, um, uh, plan. And I think it's going to lead us forward. I appreciate, um, particularly, um, echoing, uh, Councilmember Robertson's comments about, uh, you know, where we've been and where we're going on this. So, uh, I think it's, um, I think we're just in a great position and one of the things we have, we are acknowledging is that uh, things change rapidly and, and we're taking Uh, things change rapidly and, and we're taking. Uh, we have the ability to come out of this pandemic in a really great position. Um, so I, I, you know, I think we're, uh, we're on a great path and, um. The, uh. I, I was trying to think, there's one other thing I want to mention, but it's probably not that. I mean, we said a lot of things. It's just fantastic. I'm ready to vote for it and I appreciate, um, adding the couple of comments that have been made. Concepts to look at in this, um, so it strengthens it.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, I'll just say Philly and Jesse and Mac, you guys are, have been superheroes of Bellevue. For you to be as responsive as, as you have been during this pandemic. To all the economic development challenges that our city has faced and our small businesses and the way you've managed it and somehow. Uh, you know, brought us up to the top of a, of a, in a very tough time. It is remarkable. And at the same time, you're working on this, this, um, this, uh, development plan. So, good heavens. That's a lot of work. So congratulations to all of you and thank you. And I, I really think that one of the foundations to any city's success is to be welcoming and safe. And that's a lot harder than it sounds. And I think that all the departments have to work together in order to achieve that goal. And I've always hoped that we could have an equitable opportunity for everyone to have a high quality of life in Bellevue. And I'm just really proud of the fact that we, you know, regardless of where you live, you, you're near a good school. You're near good parks and open spaces. You get clean air and clean water. And walkable, safe environment and opportunities for great jobs. All around and, and every aspect of, uh, the economy. So. Uh, we're very fortunate here, but it doesn't just happen. And it's, it's due to a lot of good work from a lot of people, but I want to thank you three in particular. And, um, we have heard three recommendations. Uh, one is to, uh, include Aces Technology. In this program. The other one is to, um, make an eco-district. Uh, one of the goals and, uh, the other one is to put TIFF on the legislative agenda. So I'm wanting to ask staff what you think the implications are of implementing these recommendations.
Thank you, Mary. I can address a couple of those comments. Um, with regards to the eco-district, that kind of work would be covered. And we're happy to sync up with, uh, with ESI Group. That would be covered under, um, both the small business category and the capacity building category. And we're happy to, to again, work with, uh, with Jennifer Ewing and her group to, to make sure that we are supporting the eco-district concept to the degree that we can for economic development. Um, and with regards to, um, the tip, I would like to look to Joyce, who is, um, the lead is the, the City Governor Governmental Relations Director.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, TIFF is one of those things that, uh, for many, 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 many years. Various cities and counties have tried legislatively to pass legislation. That would allow tax increment financing in our state. There are a couple of major roadblocks. To this being an easy thing to do. And I think we all realize that many states use this tool. For economic development, but the Washington State Constitution has some provisions in it. Having to do with gift of public funds and other provisions that make it difficult, if not impossible. Use tax increment financing, um, without an amendment to the state's constitution. And we have tried, um, many cities of, as I've said, have tried and tried and tried to get this on. The legislature's agenda to take some action that would put a ballot measure on that people could vote. Uh, to amend the constitution to allow this economic development tool. And we have never, ever met with any success. I would say through the last ten or fifteen years, different legislative action has happened to try to do TIFF Light. Um, and those programs have been beneficial at the margins, but because they don't have the full backing of the state. And they're not constitutional at the moment. They just haven't been very successful. It's something that, um, we can talk to other people about and we can again, try to talk to legislators, but. It's a very heavy lift and I would say the chances of seeing that be successful, this particular session coming up with all. The really, um, tough decisions the legislature is going to have to make. To deal with COVID and the rent and eviction moratoriums. I think this is going to be something that would be very hard. To get enough attention to actually move it. It is something that we can continue to talk to people about.
Okay. And I would quickly add, Mayor, sorry, one quick piece to add is that Strategy two point two hundred, the Capacity Building Chapter in the Economic Development Plan. Would allow us to support work on TIFF, um, at the staff level if, as Joyce mentioned, there were, um, there were strong movement in the legislature.
Okay, and then, um, to include Aces Technology somewhere in this program, do you, what would the implications of that be? Or is it already mentioned somewhere?
Aces work would be covered under, um, the multimodal and advanced transportation options portion, as Councilmember Lee cited. With Aces, particular with the advanced and autonomous and connected vehicles, those items are covered under the city's, um, smart city plan. Which is being actively implemented by Transportation and the IT Department. So we do believe that those are, that. Document provides strong guidance for the city in terms of Aces. And again, this economic development staff will continue to support with. Recruitment of companies and partners and partnerships and those types of items which help advance and implement Aces work in the city. But really look to the, the operational departments and the subject matter experts in transportation and IT on those critical infrastructure pieces.
So I'm going to go back to Councilmembers Zahn and Lee and let them make a final request based on the information you got. So, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, uh, thank you, Jesse, for that explanation. I would say that I appreciate and I think that the economic development plan. Is a plan that reaches out to many departments in the city. My ask would be that these, the specific words, including, um. The consideration of an eco-district is actually specifically in the economic development plan. Because it really then sets the intentionality and, and creates more of that tie. So that would be my ask. Thank you.
Can I just stop here for a minute and just get some head nods if, if you support that? Being more specific, so I see Councilmember Barksdale and Councilmember Stokes and Lee. And me. Okay, so that's, that's enough head nods to move that forward a bit.
Thank you.
Uh, and then Councilmember Lee, would you like to speak to your recommendations?
Uh, yes, thanks, Mayor. Well. I recognize that, um, uh, the Aces, um. Uh, specific, you know, program is included in the Smart Cities. Uh, initiative. And, um, but I believe also. Uh, you know, this is a, uh, a big, big, big. Um, tool for transportation systems. And I think transportation system is a very major element in economic development. And companies, businesses move here because they can move goods and services and the people around. And people will come to live here. And I agree with what everybody says. Economic development is lots of stuff. It's quality of life, it's safety, it's education, it's many things. Uh, but that's one of the challenges is that it's somebody else's, uh, issue, somebody else's, you know. Uh, the work to be done. But I believe that this has the most important. Uh, roots in economic development because it includes all of those things. Where you have technology through this platform of, you know, autonomous, connective, shared. You know, that actually permeates through many things like Vision Zero, like environment, like, uh, reducing carbon. You know, so on. And all these things are part of this technology that enables us to do this through this Aces. Uh, uh, technology and platform. And I believe this, you know, we are seeing this everywhere. The car, car makers, everybody's going to electric autonomous vehicle. And so we know the technology is working toward that. And this, and we are a city where. This technology is really the center of it. We have AI technology, we have VR, AR, we have cloud computing, big data, it's all here.
So what is your ask, Councilmember Lee? What is it specifically you'd like?
I would just like to put emphasis on this because we, we know it's already included supposedly in the smart cities. But it doesn't hurt if it's already included, we already supporting it. I just want to make sure the economic development has a. Another important active role in this. So that.
I think that you had recommended that we say something like such as Aces Technology, that we reference that. But not limited to that in case technology moves beyond that. Um, so what would be the implications of that, Jesse? Is that something we can add into this program?
If it is that type of broad policy language that would, uh, and doesn't tie to specific goals within the five-year plan. Uh, that is, that is, uh, an amendment we can easily absorb into the, the plan.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Robertson, do you want to add something?
Thanks. So if we're passing this tonight, I think we need to be pretty specific about the language, um, because otherwise we won't know what we're voting on. So for Councilmember Lee's ask, I mean, that's really easy. That's on page twenty-three. Work for Strategies and Tactics, number three, says continue to expand transportation, including multimodal and advanced options. And you would just probably put a comma and say such as Aces. I'm totally great with that and I'm happy to. Vote on a motion to amend this as we pass it tonight to do that. I am, the reason I didn't shake my head or nod my head on Councilmember Zahn's comment is because I don't know where it would go. So, and I, I, if we could have staff say where we would use those, the eco-district. I've been scanning through the plan, trying to figure out where could we slide that in. Um, and I'm just not sure. So if, if Councilmember Zahn has a. Specific.
Do you, do you have a specific, uh, section where you wanted to put that in, Councilmembers Zahn?
Well, that's where I was, when I asked Jesse the question about where it would go, because I see in the desired outcome, sustainable. And equitable city. And so this eco-district would be part of that. So Jesse, when you said that it already is in one of these pieces. Uh, which specific section was that? You said it was in the, the business, diverse business section? I don't have it in front of me, so I'm, I gotta go.
The, the concept would be covered under the capacity building portions and or the small business portions. Um, I'll also look to Philly Marsh, who's a bit more familiar with the details, if she has any recommendations on where that particular piece might be.
All right. Well, I think because both of these are, um, dependent on other departments, um, in a collaborative approach. I would actually suggest that we add them within the foundational strategy section. Um, the eco-district, uh, piece, I think it could be added to. Cultivate attractive and diverse business districts across the city. We already call out some and we could, uh. Say including consideration of an eco-district, um, as well as Aces. I would think it would fit best. Within the foundational strategy of take local and regional approaches to solving transportation challenges through innovation. Innovative solutions. So we do call out multimodal and I would suggest calling out advanced such as Aces. Um, that section. It's, um. Prudent that we work with those departments that are, are most focused on it, but do have a tie back to economic development.
Okay, so that sounds good to me personally, but I know Councilmember Stokes had his hand up and I hear, I see Councilmember Robertson. With a question. Councilmember Stokes, did you want to add anything here?
Well, I was going to add that, uh, I, I think these concepts, while they're in there, it, it, uh, really. I think it helps, uh, highlight these and we would do these whether they're in there or not. So it's not a. That big issue, but I really like this solution that just presented. I think that's where they should go. And I think it would strengthen it in, in, um, in ways and people would have a better, clearer understanding of what, that these are included. So I'm, I'm, I would support a, an emotion to add them at that place.
Okay. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, I mean, it sounds okay, but Philly, I did not follow you. When you just start quoting from stuff, how can I follow that? I don't know page number, I don't know section number, I don't know where you want to put it. So if you can give me page number, section number, line. And tell me exactly how you're going to do it, because we're supposed to vote on this tonight. And, you know, we've got to be specific. So can you please do that for me? And I, I mean, it sounds good, but let's figure out exactly what it is.
Okay.
The page number.
Yes, I'll, I'll slow down here. So page number fifteen, founded, the section is foundational strategies. And then the second strategy down is cultivate attractive and diverse business districts across the city. That is in the, the second paragraph, um. The second sentence that starts as the city should continue to develop business districts outside of downtown. And lists a few districts with the goal of creating more distinct identities in each district. Um, that's where I would suggest adding, um, including consideration of an eco-district. Not one.
I like that. Thank you. I like that too.
If you flip the page to the next page, which is page sixteen, um, one, two, three foundational strategies down. Is take a local and regional approach to solving transportation challenges through innovative solutions. Um, about halfway down that paragraph, um, we mentioned excluding, uh, expanding multimodal. And I would suggest also adding advanced there. We added it in the, in the specific strategy, but add advanced such as Aces. Um, there in that which.
Councilmember Lee, are you good with that?
I'm completely satisfied with that. Thank you so much, Philly, for.
Yeah, that was great.
That's a great, great, great suggestion.
And then I would just say, um, to Joyce.
Want to say advanced, yeah, Aces would be good enough, but if you want to make even broader, why don't you say Aces Technologies? Right? That really open up. Not Aces, but Aces Technologies.
I, I thought I heard her say that. Okay, that sounds good.
Would that work, Philly?
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then I would just ask Joyce, when we do work on our legislative agenda, let's talk about.
Can I?
If we want, just let me finish talking, please. When we're, when we're discussing the legislative agenda and the things we want to have in that, we can, we can discuss whether we want to include that. Um, the, the, um, tax incremental financing in that. But Councilmember Lee, I know you have something to say, so go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Since, you know, I, we're talking about this topic and it has been, you know, mentioned how difficult challenge it is. Unquestionably, all the history is there. I've been on the city council for twenty-seven years. I've been very, just much involved in economic development. So I know what happened. I know politics, you know, the legislature, one individual has been controlling it. And the topic has not been brought up, but now things change. We know timing is important for everything. COVID nineteen is part of the timing. Economic situation is going to be dire. I don't know for how long, you know, with this impact we have experienced. And this timing's good, that people are thinking and looking and Greater Seattle Partnership is looking at it. And P, P, PSRC's Economic Development District Board is looking at it.
Councilmember Lee, I'm about to reverse my vote.
That's okay. Thank you. No, no, because, because you, you just, you, because Joyce just had the chance to say about all that stuff. I just make it a proper perspective so that we understand what we're looking at. So, I, I, I'm not saying we need to. Do this, I've had to go my vote, but I'm just trying to give you a perspective. And this is something that we need to put on our legislative agenda and seriously look at it. Okay, that's it.
Could, could, could we all, councilmembers have equal time?
Councilmember Stokes, I'll call on you if you raise your hand, okay?
I did. And I was waving at you.
Well, Councilmember Lee was still speaking, so I didn't have a chance to call on you.
Okay.
But if you'd like to speak, you're, well, you're free to do that.
I was just questioning, we, I, I, I think, uh, the suggestion that it, uh, that we add this in the, um. Legislative agenda is the place for this. I would not vote to, uh, include, um. That in this package.
Apologize. Sorry. I apologize. Sorry. I did not propose to include. I just suggested that we, our, we, we make this.
Councilmember Lee, may I ask that you not just, just jump in, okay? So, uh, I think we all understood that actually the question was to ask, no, Councilmember Lee, let me speak, please. The question was to, when we have our legislative agenda discussion, that we include this topic in the discussion so that that time we can talk about it. And I believe that Joyce, you nodded your head. And so we've heard from two. Are there any other councilmembers who would like to comment or ask a question? Otherwise, I'll assume that we're ready to vote for this, the way it was amended so cleverly by Philly. And Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, I'm going to give you an opportunity to, to really show us how you can make a, a good, uh, motion here with this amendment.
Oh, no, I'm, well, we, we still want to vote on this tonight or do we want to bring this back on consent to make sure that it's, that the language is in the right place and everyone agrees to the language for, you know, per Councilmembers Zahn and Councilmember Lee?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, that's a good suggestion. We could do that.
I, I would prefer that they have a chance to look at it one more time, make sure that's okay, and then we can just put on the consent calendar.
Um, but we're. Just ask staff how they feel about that. I think that's a good idea. Any problem with that, Philly or Mac or Jessie?
We're happy to help in any way, Mayor. Um, we had understood from the last meeting, the council would like to push this over the finish line. So, uh, we're ready to, to take it tonight. If, if you're comfortable with the suggestion, we're happy to bring it back if, if you would like that.
Okay. So, so it's not, no problem. Okay. So Councilmembers Zahn.
I'm ready to vote tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Lee.
I'm ready to vote, but I think that this is a very wonderful, important piece like we talked about, you know, and it deserves, it deserves some real comment when we act on it. So, uh, I would want to hopefully be, reserve that right to say something nice about this legislation.
May I have head nods for who's ready to vote on it tonight versus doing, um, it on consent calendar next week? So I'm comfortable with tonight. So go ahead, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
All right. Uh, move to adopt resolution ninety-eight thirty-four, adopting the Bellevue Economic Development Plan, which sets forth direction to guide the city's economic development activities over the next five years with inclusion and emphasis on the addition of eco-district language and the addition of the ACES technologies.
Second. Nicely done. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great. So I appreciate everybody's, uh, participation tonight. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.